I will call to order the March 11th recession. Go ahead, whoever's doing the presentation.
Alright, well, thanks everybody and thanks for being here this evening. Looking forward to this training on active threat with a little bit of de-escalation involved in it and how to deal with somebody that's an escalated or irrational mindset. I'm with Blue Ethos specialized training. What part I am in is the active threat preparedness and like I said, the de-escalation. So again, really appreciate you guys having me out and that you guys are interested in learning some of the new ways of thinking on handling an active shooter, how to survive something like that. It's really important, it's becoming more frequent, we'll touch on that a little bit. A little bit about me, I figured I'd stand over here because I'm not turning my back to anybody. But my name's Robert Fuller, I'm a police officer. Can't technically legally tell you what agency I'm with, but I'm right across the river to the north. But I've been a police officer for just over eight years now. Within my roles of the agency I worked at, I'm an active shooter instructor for our agency. So I train our officers on how we're going to respond to an active shooter, active threat on the law enforcement end of things. I'm a firearms instructor, so I train our officers on how to manipulate our firearm systems, rifles, handguns, less lethal options, shoot, shoot accurately. I'm a field training officer, so when we hire somebody new, they get put with me for about a month or so. I'll train them on a variety of different topics, get them ready for solo patrol. And then I'm also on the countywide joint SWAT team as a SWAT operator. So that's a little bit about me, where I'm coming from with all of this. By no means am I a doctor or psychologist or anything, but I do talk a little bit about our minds and how we react as humans to threats that are presented in front of us. So kind of just understanding what an active shooter is. And throughout this little training today, I might say active threat, active shooter, just know that they mean the same thing, just not always is it somebody with a gun trying to kill people. A lot of times it can be with edge weapons, knives. The Crossroads Mall in St. Cloud, guy was going through the mall stabbing people with a knife. Right? People take vehicles through parades, it would still be considered that active threat, active shooter. So, but they are becoming more and more frequent. The numbers on active shooter, mass shootings have been, have been going up. 2024 was a little less than 2023, but still high, right? And one thing to note is that there's typically no pattern to the selection of victims. Now, the suspect might have that one person in mind that they really have that vendetta against, that they really want to go after and kill, but in doing so and getting to them, they want to go and kill as many people as possible. Axon signage in Minneapolis, 2012. Andrew Engeldinger was an employee at Axon signage, he was getting terminated. Right before he went into the manager's office to get terminated, he went out to the parking lot, to his truck, grabbed his gun. On his way back in to shoot his supervisor in HR, he ended up shooting the UPS driver there first, that was just there delivering a package. Nothing to do with him getting terminated, nothing to do with him losing his job, just wrong place, wrong time. He just wanted to kill as many people as he can and then he ended up killing seven others in the business itself, so. So we'll get into what we teach at Blue Ethos as a multi-option response. Has anybody thought about whether workplace, personal life, what you would do if you were in an active shooter situation, active threat situation? Have you guys kind of thought about what your options would be? Some, yes, some maybe not necessarily. And we're, I'll try to keep it as broad as I can because we have city employees, right? A lot of you are city employees, some of you are just city council where you have other jobs. But, so a lot of this is maybe geared towards workplace or just in here with a threat assessment at the end. But understand that this is relatable to every aspect of your life, right? Out in shopping at the grocery store, out to eat, out to dinner, you're at a movie theater. All of the things that we're going to talk about today is relevant to those situations as well. So like I said, we teach a multi-option response, a little video to go over kind of what we're teaching. It might be loud for you sitting right next to the TV and you guys too, but, and then I'll dive into what it is. So like I said, the multi-option response that we teach is three different options. It kind of quickly went over, but now we're going to dive into it. The first thing that we teach is to get out. And to do this as quickly and effectively as you possibly can is to really understand what your exit options are, not just the exit options that you guys use daily, your main entrance and exit, but what your secondary exit, your third, your fourth option to get out of wherever you are, right? A window might be one of your only options to get out. If, if we, if that door didn't exist and there was a shooter over here, to get out of where we were here, we might have to go out this window right here. What do we have available to us to break that window? Chairs, we have the flagpoles, maybe even some laptops. But, but knowing that we do have options to break, we do have improvised weapons that we can use to break windows is something that we need to think about before we're actually in that situation. And I'll talk about mental rehearsals a lot too, but very similar to like a fire. The best way not to get burnt in a fire is to get out. Best way not to get shot in an active shooter situation is to get out. And you're practicing this both mentally and physically because like, like I said, I'll touch on a little bit, but mental rehearsals, creating those mental scripts in your brain about how you're going to respond to a threat in front of you, because it's really important. Our brain, our bodies and brains go through three different processes when a threat is presented in front of us. Fight, flight, or freeze. If we've thought about it before and we've come up with some sort of plan that how we're going to react to an active shooter, we're less likely to freeze. And that's what we can't do, we can't freeze. Freezing gives that shooter more time to end up shooting us. So we're practicing this mentally and maybe even physically. Maybe every once in a while, if you're not so used to taking that second, third, fourth option to get out, every once in a while, take a walk around and make sure you're walking it so that you're getting those, those mental scripts in your brain of how you're going to get out if you need to get out of a secondary exit. Why do we train get out? Columbine school shooting, if you remember that one, is the major case study on why we want people to get out. So Columbine, we don't fault them for it, that's the only training they had, but back then, the training for an active threat, active shooter was to shelter in place. Very similar to a tornado drill, was to get under your desks and we'll wait for this to pass. Well, what's wrong with that? They're just sitting ducks, right? If they're, if they're just waiting underneath their desks, the bad guys come in, Harrison Cleveland come in, and they're easily, easy targets. The picture shown here is the library of Columbine School where most of the killings took place. Harrison Cleveland were able to walk into the library. All the students and staff members were hiding just underneath a variety of desks. And Harrison Cleveland just methodically went through and executed students and staff members, deciding who gets to live, who gets to die. And there's a phone call of one of the teachers making to 911 saying there's shooters inside of our school. We need help. In the background of that phone call, you can hear a little girl saying, hey, let's go, we got to get out. Teacher says, no, get back here, get under your desks. And so they stayed and ultimately got shot. If they had just listened to that little girl, the little circle shown there is an exit from the library into a small hallway. And then that small hallway leads to another door to completely out of the building. And we think that's where maybe she was referring to is let's get out of here, let's run over here and get out of the building. Again, we don't fault them for it, we didn't have any, any training or anything to really base what to do off of. But, but that's what they did back then and that's why we're learning from that now. It was also a major case study for law enforcement. Law enforcement, back then, again, we don't fault them for, for this training, but back then it was a surround, contain, and then wait for a SWAT team to get there. Well, how long does it take for a SWAT team to get to something like this? Depending on where you are, it can take upwards to an hour. So what they did was they made a perimeter around the school, waited for the SWAT team to get there to enter the building. What we train now in law enforcement is as soon as we get somebody on scene, as soon as possible, we need to get in to that building and locate the shooter and eliminate the threat. Whether we're by ourselves with a two-man team, a three-man team, we train single officer entries. That's just how we train now because active shooter incidents end in one of three ways. They get shot by the police, they commit suicide, or they just give up. And those three ways only happen when we can put that pressure back on the suspect. A lot of times I refer to active shooter, active shooters as cowards because they go after the places where they have a large amount of victims that are easy targets, like schools, grocery stores. They know that there's not going to be much resistance at schools and grocery stores. So that's why I refer to them as cowards, they have that, that end game in life, whether they're going to just commit suicide or they're going to make the cops shoot them. But they go after those places where they're not going to meet much resistance. The second thing that we train for the multi-option response is to actively barricade. If we can't get out, now we need to make it as difficult as possible for that shooter to get where we are. So that's, that's actively putting things in front of the entrance, actively moving things around the room and making it as difficult as possible for that shooter to get to us. When we watch video security footage of shooters walking through buildings, walking through schools, they're checking doors, they're not, if the door's locked, they're not taking the time to try to unlock it or push it open or force it open. Again, they're looking for easy targets, easy victims. So they're not taking their time to try to force a door open that's closed or locked. So the more we can put in front of our door to make it more difficult for that shooter to get in, the less time he's going to, he's going to take to try to get to where we are. Because he already knows that 911's been called and then help is likely on its way. So we need to know what kind of doors we're working with. So if we look around the room, this door here, it's a door that opens out of our room, right? A little bit difficult to barricade a door that opens out of our room. But how could we maybe barricade this door? This one here.
Put a table in front of it and you start stacking stuff.
Just start stacking stuff, yeah, absolutely. Because then he opens it, now he's met with a wall of tables and chairs. Yep, so it's got the emergency bar here. Sometimes they have little pin locks, I don't, I don't see one there. But sometimes the emergency bars like that have a little pin lock that you can pop. Otherwise, we could maybe, I don't know if this, in the video that was shown, it had a little short actor tie in a belt around the door assist. So I don't know if the door assist on this one comes through. I won't shut it all the way until I know how to lock this. Yep, so it goes on the other side. So if we were on the other side of that, but for this door to open, that door assist has to expand. So if that door assist was on the inside of where we are, if we tied something around that, that would lock that door shut, that door's not going to open without that being able to expand. If we could get a rope around that emergency bar and tie it to a table, like you said, or put a table up, tie it, or belts, or shoelaces, anything we can do to secure that door and make it as difficult as possible. We need to understand the difference between cover and concealment. Other than the officers in here, what's cover, what's concealment? Anybody know? So cover is something that's likely going to stop a bullet. Some of your brick walls, your thick oak trees, that wall back there is, would be, if you were to run on the other side of that, I would consider that cover. Concealment is something that's just going to hide you, not necessarily stop the bullet, but it's going to hide you. So if you, if you all like duck down underneath behind those, the chambers there, that would be concealment. A bullet is going to go right through that wood. So I wouldn't rely, and I'll talk again a little bit more about it in our, the threat assessment that I do at the end, but I wouldn't count on that protecting you from any sort of rounds, right? Or if you just tip this table over on its side and I knelt down behind it, that's just concealment. That's not going to stop any bullets. So understanding when you're, when you're doing your mental rehearsals going, okay, what's cover, what's concealment? What's going to stop a bullet? If I, if I can get behind it and then figure out where I'm running after that, I need it to be cover. I don't want it just to be concealment. Why do we, why do we actively barricade? Why, what's the case study on this is the Virginia Tech school shooting. One of the worst educational college shootings in history, if anybody remembers this one. So the picture shown shows a couple of different columns of rooms, passive rooms, that when the shooter came into where they were, didn't do anything at the door, didn't do any kind of barricading, just kind of hid in the corner of their classroom. And then on the right is the proactive rooms where they were actively barricading their door to their classroom. So what happened, the shooter ended up committing a shooting on one side of campus, went to his dorm, changed his clothes, mailed out his manifestos, grabbed his gear. He had some vests and a bunch of, a bunch of guns. Went over to a different part of campus, went to the second story of an educational hall where the classrooms were, chained the door shut so law enforcement couldn't get in, put notes on the doors saying if you open these doors, explosives are going to go off. Went up into a empty classroom on the second floor, put his stuff on, checked his guns. And a couple of the survivors, even in interviews afterwards, said, yeah, we saw him walking up and down the hallway of our second story classrooms. And it was almost middle to the end of the year. So it's not like any students would have been lost or unsure where their classrooms were. Everybody knew where their classrooms were, but he looked lost because he kept pacing up and down the hallways. What he was doing is looking into the classrooms to see what, what classrooms had the most people and then he would go back into that empty room. But I touch on intuition a little bit too, but intuition would have been like, okay, that is really weird. Why is this person coming back and forth, back and forth on our kind of little segregated educational hall where our classrooms are? Like this is really weird, maybe we should check this out or somebody maybe should check this out, but. Anyway, the shooter ended up going into 206, 14 people total were in there, he killed 10, wounded 2. The people that survived in the passive rooms ended up saying that they were laying underneath other people that were shot and killed and played dead. Because the shooter would end up, actually came into the rooms multiple times, three, four times, and just continued to shoot people that were laying down on the ground. The path, the proactive rooms 204, a really cool story here. 204, the professor was actually a survivor of the Holocaust back in the Gulags. And he ended up barricading the door with himself. He put himself in the door, held the door shut by himself, told all of his students, hey, knock out those windows, they're on the second story as you can see, but knock out the windows, jump out, get out of here. So he and another, another student ended up holding the door shut with him. Suspect ended up shooting through the doors, killing the professor, one other student. And then the three that were wounded were wounded because they jumped out of the window and broke some legs. 205, 12 people, they did a really, really good job barricading. Zero people killed, zero people wounded. 207, ended up, he ended up shooting through the walls and the door and killing five and wounding six. But as you can see, proactive rooms had a much higher survival rate than just the passive rooms. So we need to make it as difficult possible for that shooter to get into us, to make our survival rate go up and give us a chance to make it home at the end of this, so. One of the last options, the last option, kind of the hardest one to put ourselves in, the mindset of this is to act with aggression. We can't get out, we weren't able to successfully barricade our doors as well as we wanted to. Bad guys coming in with a gun, we got to fight for our lives. We need to make it count, we need to act with aggression. One of the things you can't do is hesitate. Any hesitation equals time for that bad guy, time for that bad guy equals trigger pulse. So we cannot hesitate, we need to be mentally prepared to fight for our lives. One of the things that we need to be mentally prepared for is you might get shot, right? You got to say to yourself, okay, he's coming in, I might get shot. Or a coworker might, might get shot, somebody might get shot in here, but we have to continue to fight. We got to take them out and survive this. So we need to know what our improvised weapons are. Looking around in this room, do we have anything improvised weapons other than the handguns that chief has? And sir, you have one? Right? What do we have for improvised weapons? The gavel? Oh yeah, yeah, you hit somebody in the head with that, you're likely going to probably kill them, right? Anything else? Chairs, pens, pencils, name, nameplates, mics, really anything can be considered an improvised weapon. Your, your bottle there of juice, Snapple, right? You can use those things as an improvised weapon to throw at the suspect, to hit them in the head with it, to gain some time for us to come up with a different or another plan. So what, has anybody heard of the Oodle Loop other than the police officers again? Oodle Loop? Yeah, absolutely. So the Oodle Loop is actually the process that our brains have to go through anytime we do an action. Anytime we wanted to do something, even pick up my water bottle here, I had to go through the Oodle Loop. It doesn't take very long, but it is a process that we all have to do. We per se have to observe, orient, decide, act. I use the example of shooting a gun because it's relevant to what we're talking about. If I wanted to shoot a gun, I would first have to observe my target, orient at where it is relation to me, decide to pull the trigger, and then actually pull the trigger. Again, it doesn't take very long, that cycle can happen very, very fast. But if we can disrupt the shooter's Oodle Loop, every time he comes back up onto target, disrupt that Oodle Loop, get him back up target, make him flinch. What's the human natural response when something gets thrown at you or you get hit? To duck, to flinch, to go, to turn away, right? So if we can disrupt his Oodle Loop every time he comes back up onto target and we're throwing stuff at him, we're hitting him in the head with him, that's going to give us a little bit of advantage to jump on him, to tackle him, to hit him again with something else when, when they have a gun and we don't. So this was developed by the, by the military and it works really, really well. And I actually have kind of a hands-on example, this is called a red man gun. What we use this in law enforcement for is, is just training purposes. It's a, it's a block of plastic, doesn't go click, doesn't go boom. We use it for weapon retention stuff, use to force stuff, but it's just, it's just a tool that we use. But I'm going to do a little demonstration. So, what's your name?
Aiden.
Aiden? So Aiden's got his improvised weapon, what, in your work area, what do you, what would you have for a good improvised weapon?
Keyboard.
Keyboard? Yeah. Keyboard, sabler, so. So Aiden's, Aiden's going to be our leader in the, in the room. I'm going to go outside this door here because it's kind of the most center. But I'm going to be the bad guy, Aiden's going to be the hero here saying, hey, bad guy's coming in, we couldn't get out, we couldn't actively barricade, he's coming in. I'm going to throw my keyboard at him, disrupt that Oodle Loop, you guys come up with another plan to take this guy out, okay? So again, what's the natural human response when something gets thrown at us or we get hit with something? Is to duck, to turn away? So when I come in through the threshold here, just throw that at me, okay? Not hard though. So I'm probably. So you, so let's say that is something with a little bit of weight behind it, right? And he threw it really, really hard, he threw the chair, he threw Yeti mug, he threw something that has a lot of weight behind it, hits the bad guy in the head as soon as he walks in that door. Right? That's going to do some damage, that's going to give us an opportunity as a group to say, okay, Aiden, you're going to throw this at him, we're going to go jump on him, we're going to tackle him, we're going to punch him in the head, we're going to do something, but we're going to survive. We're going to take this guy out, right? So you can do it again, good shot. Yeah. Does anybody really want to throw a baseball at me? You guys are a little far away, but if you want to come up here and throw one, you sure can. So now. So now we have more people with more improvised weapons, right? So if, if more of us have more objects, more improvised weapons, and we maybe even stagger the throws, like one throws, and then another one throws, and then another one throws. That's disrupting that Oodle Loop every time something gets thrown. Gives us more time to do what we need to do to survive. Alright, same thing, when I come through this door, just throw the ball at me.
I thought he was going for pizza.
So is there a, a chance or a risk that bad guy's still able to pull the trigger a couple of times? Absolutely, right? But are they going to be necessarily accurate in where they, where he wants them to be? Probably not, very, a lot less accurate. And statistically shown, active shooter incidents happen with handguns. Are you more accurate with a handgun or a rifle? Rifle. So handguns in alone are not very accurate, especially at a distance. But when something's getting thrown at you, you're going to be a lot less accurate. You're getting tackled, you're going to be a lot less accurate. So the, the more we can disrupt that Oodle Loop and give us time as people with, that don't have a firearm, with somebody that does have a firearm, it enhances our chances of survival as well. So a time that this happened in real life is Flight 93. Does everybody remember what Flight 93 was? One of the planes hijacked in the 9/11 terrorist attacks. So it's headed to the Pentagon. And the passengers and the flight attendants knew that the only chance they had at surviving was to retake that plane. Do you think when the hijackers went to hijack school, they had a class on what happens when the passengers tried to retake the plane? No, right? Probably not. They just had the class on how to take this plane and get it to where you want it to go. But they knew that the only chance they had at surviving was to retake the plane. So Sandra Bradshaw was one of the flight attendants. She used her improvised weapon was boiling hot water. So that's what she used for boiling hot water. Todd Beamer, one of the, one of the passengers that was really the leader, that kind of started this plan of, hey, this is what we got to do, we got to retake this plane. Somebody made a phone call to a loved one saying, hey, our plane's been hijacked. And in the background of that phone call, you can hear Todd actually saying, hey, you guys ready? Alright, let's roll, let's do this, let's try to retake this plane. And that's what they did, they, they put the water on the hijackers, tackled them, fought with them, tried to retake the plane. They weren't successful on totally regaining control of that plane, but the plane did go down early in a field. So they saved an unknown number of lives on the ground, but weren't able to save their own. But absolute heroes in my book, what they did and what they, what they decided to do to try to, try to survive something like that. We talk about practice makes perfect. And something like this, it's not going to make perfect because we can't practice every scenario that possibly could come up. When I feel training a new officer, I get them for what I said about a month. Is it realistic for me to train them on every threat or scenario that they're going to come across in their career as a cop? No, right? There's, there's unknown number of scenarios that they could possibly have. It's unrealistic to just train for all of that. It's unrealistic for all of you to have an answer for each and every scenario that you possibly could come across. But what we say is practice makes proficient. And we talk about mental scripts, I touched on it a little bit at the beginning. Mental scripts are what our mind automatically reverts to when we're confronted with a threat. It automatically goes back to, I've solved this problem before in the past, here's how I did it, can this work? And that happens really, really fast. Instead of freezing, instead of going, oh crap, somebody's got a gun, what do I do? What do I do? What do I do? Okay, I'm going to do this. It'll be, oh, they got a gun, I'm out. Oh, they got a gun, I'm going to go with this improvised weapon, I'm going to barricade. So we talk about practice makes proficient, we're creatures of habit, if we practice it, if we think about it, even once a month, once every two months. But you're going through it in your head saying, okay, this is, this is what I'm going to do. Even as a, as a police officer for over eight years, when I'm driving around, calls are slow, I'm even still thinking, okay, I'm driving by Casey's gas station, what am I going to do if I see somebody running out with a gun and they got stuff in their hand, like they just robbed the store? What am I saying on the radio? Where am I parking? Am I exiting my car and chasing after them on foot? Am I just going to hit them with my car? What am I doing? What that's doing is creating those mental scripts because if that happens, but not at Casey's, but at a bank or somewhere else, I've already thought of. or somewhere else, I've already thought about what I would do if it happened at Casey's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with a quick response even though it's happening somewhere else. So that's what we want everybody else to think is, okay, you're thinking about it maybe at work, but now you're out to eat with family members, and somebody comes in, just had bad sushi, comes in to shoot the place up because they didn't like it, and now you're kinda caught in the middle of it. What are you gonna do? What options do you guys have? My wife really gets mad at me, but what I do sometimes when we're out and about shopping, I'll say, hey, uh, where's the, where's the second option to get out? She's like, oh, we're doing this again. It's like, well, yeah, I just, I just wanna touch on it. Instead of the main entrance that we came in, have you seen any other exit signs? Are there any other exit signs that we can get out of the building completely if we had to? If there was a fire, if there was an active shooter? Because what's that doing is that's creating those mental scripts in her brain for when she's out shopping with our two boys, and I'm not with her, but she's already thought about that a couple of times. So she'll be able to react a lot faster. So a lot of the things that we're covering today is for, yeah, workplace stuff, but also personal life, share with your families, get everybody on that same page of, hey, we need to be thinking about this, uh, just in case we do come across it, where we're not freezing, we're not stopping going, oh crap, what do I do? What do I do? What do I do? You already have that answer. So what do we tell our, our new cops a lot? Um, is that your body's not gonna go where your mind has it. If you haven't thought about how you're gonna react to a threat, you're gonna freeze. You're gonna freeze. So, one of the major profiles that you as a city, uh, is gonna be looking at for an active shooter is that ideology profile. City employees, uh, city council members. This is somebody, and, and I'll go over two profiles that happened in Minnesota recently. Um, every community has somebody of this variation in their community. Um, you might even be able to picture, picture somebody that kinda, kinda correlates with, with what it is. But 73% white, uh, these are statistics from the FBI. 100% male, 73% in their 40s. They're suicidal, and they have violent criminal histories. So the two profiles that we're gonna go over is a New Hope, uh, city council shooting in 2015. So 10 years ago, but still recent. Uh, we're gonna watch the video about what happened here. You don't see anybody get shot. And then I'll touch on who he was and the history behind him, and then I'll do one more. But when you watch this video, after what we just talked about, and our multi-option response to an active threat. And I'm not making fun at the city council members by any means. They probably didn't have any training. It wasn't really, 2015, we weren't seeing a lot of active shooters. It wasn't really in our, in the back of our heads like it is today. But watch what they do as city council members when there's an active shooter right outside the chambers. All right? That was a gunshot. So the guy on the left is armed. He's got a handgun. So it goes like this for another minute or so, no audio, nothing really shown, other than this shown. But what do you guys think right away, just watching a little bit of this? Yeah, the only one that should be poking their heads is the guy with the handgun.
Everybody else is a target.
Yeah, you put your head up, I mean, the guy's right outside the chambers, and your head, that's the only thing that exposed. What do you think he's gonna aim at? Your head, right? But also, a lot of, what I see is a lot of freezing. The, the, what guy, oh my gosh, somebody was just shot. So you're just gonna sit there and, and, you know, not seeing what he's seeing, but, but let's get out. Let's get out of where we're at. Let's, let's remove ourselves from what we would call the danger area and get ourselves somewhere safe. So, which is really nice if, similar situation if that happened, the first shot fired would likely be right outside these doors. If it, if it was happening here, right? You guys have a nice exit door right there that you guys could be shuffling to, probably jumping over each other, um, trying to get the quickest through that threshold, I see.
I'm gonna knock you guys down.
Chief said that that door is always open during city council meetings, which is great. Uh, so, and then anybody else that's in, in the audience here is likely gonna be going to that, that exit as well. So once you get through that threshold, I'll talk about it after, during the threat assessment. But, so the suspect here was Raymond Comence. He had a very long history with city officials, the police department. They ended up even having to do protection orders against him. And, um, you know, it was, it was a very long history of back and forth. Raymond did not like any of the city officials, hated the police. He actually had a range at his house where he had mannequins of police officers and he practiced shooting them. Um, but he had a long history of mental health issues, and he was that ideology profile to a T. And, um, he ended up coming in and he, he got shot right away by the police. Once he came in, there were police already on site, and, and they took him out immediately. But, um, lot, long history with him. He was that, like I said, that ideology profile to a T. So, um, every, in the city I worked for, uh, we have like three or four of these guys that are just the same exact, I mean, they, they cross every box. And we're just waiting for the day that, um, they do it at one of our grocery stores or a city council meeting, or, or at some point, so. The next one, uh, we'll watch the news clip on it, um, and then we'll kinda dive into what his profile was.
Police saying the suspect, who is in custody, is quote, "No stranger to law enforcement." Stephanie Ramos have the latest.
This morning, a search for answers after a deadly shooting at this medical facility in Buffalo, Minnesota. A gunman, now identified as 67-year-old Gregory Ulrich, allegedly walking into Alina Health Clinic and opening fire just before 11:00 AM, then reportedly calling police himself.
I just checked in and I was walking to be, to take a seat. And I heard this man say, get down on the ground. And I turned and I saw the back of this man and he had a gun. And there were screaming and there were shooting.
At least five people injured, one of them dying overnight. Police also locating suspicious packages in the lobby and at a nearby Super 8 motel where the suspect was recently staying. Ulrich, who is believed to have acted alone, is known to local authorities.
There certainly is a history of, uh, him being unhappy with the healthcare that he received.
The suspect's brother, Richard Ulrich, telling ABC News that Gregory had back surgery a few years ago and allegedly became addicted to opioids. Ulrich has an arrest record, and in 2018 was banned from the Alina Clinic. The injured who are still hospitalized are expected to recover. Police say this all could have been so much worse, especially since this is a busy commercial area and there are schools nearby. Ulrich is scheduled to appear in court on Thursday. Robin?
All right, Stephanie, thank you.
So, yeah, Gregory, his vendetta was against the Alina Clinic, right? So it wasn't necessarily against the city, uh, but it's still the same profile. It's still the same ideology profile that, that you guys would, would probably have the most, the threat against, or the threat would be the ideology profile. But Gregory, yeah, he had, again, that long history with the police department and long history with that Alina Clinic. Uh, the doctor ended up getting a harassment restraining order against him because he ended up finding his personal phone number, calling him, threatening him, saying he's gonna kill him. And, uh, when he went to that clinic that day, the doctor wasn't even there, it wasn't working. He found out that the doctor wasn't there, called himself in, and gave himself up to the police. But he also had some explosives. And, um, I could really talk about Gregory and how the system failed him and the victims of this tragic incident. Uh, but we don't have all the time for that because I'd take a long time on that one. But, um, ultimately, he was able to legally purchase a handgun, which he shouldn't have been. And, um, that's the gun he ended up using was when he purchased legally, so. But again, he matches that profile to a T, exactly all of those things, so. Uh, when we, when we go over our mental rehearsals and we talk about with our family about how we're gonna respond to an active threat, active shooter situation, one of the things that we need to take into consideration is how we react as humans under fear. There's two different types of fear. There's real fear, and then there's unwarranted fear. Unwarranted fear is something like if I said, there's no way I'm gonna jump in the Mississippi River. There's alligators in there, I'm gonna get eaten by an alligator if I go in the river. Right? That doesn't make sense. There's no alligators in the river. That's unwarranted fear. Real fear is something that's happening right in front of you that's causing you to be fearful. Your adrenaline's spiking, your heartbeat is spiking. Your cortisol in your bloodstream is thickening. And you're having a harder time, your heart's beating, you're having a harder time breathing. That's what real fear can do to you. It can take a lot of your senses away. It takes away your gross motor skill, or your fine motor skills, and you maybe only have gross motor skills. An example I have for this is, a couple of years ago, a partner and I got dispatched to a guy that had been using meth for a few weeks, wanted to burn the house down with his family inside. We get there, guy goes up into his bedroom, barricades himself into his bedroom. We kick the door open, he's standing at the end of the bed with a, with a hatchet saying, I want you to kill me, you're gonna have to kill me. We're screaming at him, drop the hatchet. We're arguing back and forth. He wants to kill, kill us, he wants us to kill him. We're arguing back and forth. Finally, he puts the hatchet down, but he grabs a knife. And we're like, dude, that's not any better. You gotta drop that knife, drop the knife. Again, we're, we're going back and forth, back and forth. Finally, my partner and I both ended up grabbing our tasers, tased him. He fell down, we went handcuffed him and got him off to the hospital where he desperately needed to go. After the fact, we went back into the room, gathered our evidence, the, the hatchet, the knife, our taser cartridges and stuff, and walking in there, my adrenaline was down and I wasn't in that real fear response. I could start to smell lighter fluid. And if you've ever smelled lighter fluid, it's, it's really potent. I mean, even just a little bit of it, you can smell it very easily. But he had ended up dousing his whole room in lighter fluid. But under my real fear response, when I forced that door open and I saw him there with that hatchet, my real fear completely took away my sense of smell. I couldn't smell anything because I was only focused on, if he comes at me, I'm gonna have to shoot him. I'm gonna have to shoot him, I'm gonna have to shoot him. I don't wanna shoot him, am I gonna have to shoot him? And what I was saying to him. My real fear completely just focused on what was gonna, what could possibly kill me or what I was gonna have to do. After my adrenaline had gone down and my stress was down, now I could start to smell again, and I was super mad at myself. I'm like, how could I not smell lighter fluid when he doused the whole room in it? And then I learned about what real fear can do to us and how it changes what we receive as receptors, uh, what's based on what's important in front of us. So when we're doing mental rehearsals and how we're gonna respond to somebody with a gun in front of us, it's gonna take some of your fine motor skills. So let's say that door is closed, and we need to get out as fast as we can. That door is locked from our room to get into the other side, other than a fob, right? You would need your fob. How easy is it to get your fob out of your pocket and swipe it on that keypad? Is it difficult? Are your fine motor skills gonna be somewhat depleted where you're not gonna, you're gonna be fumbling it? Right? Scary movies where the victim's running from the suspect, they're a bad guy, and they get to their car and they're fumbling their car keys to get into the car. That's real life. That happens in real life. You're that scared, you're under that real fear, your fine motor skills are gone, and you can't get that key in that keyhole very easy. That is real life. So we need to take those kinds of considerations when we're doing our mental rehearsals, like, okay, how easy is this? How easy is it to grab that keyboard and take it out and hit somebody? That'd be pretty easy. But if we're grabbing like little pens and pencils, is it harder? Using our fine motor skills to grab those pens and pencils to use them as improvised weapons? Yeah, maybe. So those are all things that we need to take into consideration. I touched a little bit on listening to our intuition and, and why it's important that we have intuition. I like to ask everybody, who has better intuition, men or women? Yeah, a mixed crowd like this, we typically get no answer. But when we do healthcare and stuff, uh, and it's predominantly women, they're all, oh, women, women have better intuition. And then when we have a mixed room, we don't get much. But women absolutely have better intuition than men. Um, they're just smarter overall. Uh, men, we typically use reason and logic to talk ourselves...
No, we are. I mean, when I'm walking down the street by myself, I have to analyze every situation in a way you guys don't have to. So, women have been doing threat assessments our entire lives.
Yeah, 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 they absolutely, um, uh, have much better intuition. And they do a better job of listening to their intuition. Men, like I said, we, we tend to use reason and logic to talk ourselves out of what our intuition is telling us. If our intuition says, ooh, I don't like the way that this guy is sitting in the parking lot when you're walking into Cub Foods, or you got a bad feeling, but then our brains go to, wow, I can, I can handle it. I can, I can deal with it. Or, you know, oh, nothing's bad ever happened to me, it's not gonna happen. It's important for us to listen to that intuition and, and know why we have it. Intuition is something, is instinctual. We're born with it. We have intuition from the day we're born with those gut feelings. That's what that is. It's, it's just something that we all have. And it's really important when we're talking about active shooters and, and you're going and walking around in public and you have a bad feeling about somebody, you may not necessarily need to act on that intuition, like start running away. But now it's time to pay more attention to why you have that intuition and what's making your red flags go off. That's really important, so. So body language, pre-tact indicators that we talk about a lot too is, is, these are the things that we're watching for when we're having that city council meeting and there's somebody in the crowd that you're like, man, I, I know he's there for, you know, he's very upset about whatever's on the agenda today, and he's gonna, he's gonna get upset. Uh, these are some things that, that we watch for as cops and that kinda tell us like something, something might be happening. So hand raising, for whatever reason, people get, the more upset people get, the higher their hands get. And it, it happens a lot, like when I'm dealing with people on domestics and they're, they start talking with their hands. That's when they're really upset, right? Or their hands are above their head, or they're on their head, they're getting really upset. So, for whatever reason, when people get more upset, their hands go up. Padding. Padding is something that I'm actually guilty of. Um, this is, this happens when I carry, uh, my handgun off duty. I carry inside my waistband, so it's concealed. But when I get out of my vehicle or I start walking, um, I'll always kinda just touch it. And we call it padding. But I'll, I'll touch it periodically, like, okay, it's still there. I can physically feel it pressed up against my hip. But for whatever reason, subconsciously, I pat where that gun is and adjust it, or I'll just touch it and be like, okay, it's still there. Watching, watching squad camera, body, body, body cam footage of officer-involved shootings, a lot of times, the suspect is doing that. They're touching where that weapon is, such, um, just very, very slightly or, or just gradually, like, okay, it's still there. So if you've got somebody coming in here and they're adjusting where their waistband might be, or, or maybe where they're carrying a gun, that can be a good indication that maybe they do have something concealed. But as we're getting into argument stuff, puffing out their chest, we call it peacocking, always making themselves look bigger than they actually are. I have to do this a lot. I don't know if you can tell, but I'm a little guy. So when I'm dealing, most of the time I'm dealing with people, they're larger than me. So when I know that we're gonna end up getting into a fight, I actually start to puff my chest out and make myself look a little bit bigger, um, in hopes that that'll somewhat de-escalate the situation. Typically doesn't, because they're like, you're tiny, don't worry about it. Um, but a lot of times, people will do that, whether they're big or, or small. They'll just puff out their chest and make themselves look bigger. That thousand-yard stare, they're just looking right through you. You're trying to de-escalate somebody or talk to somebody and they're just, they're, they're not reacting to anything you're saying, they're just piercing their eyes right through your eyes. Uh, that's a good indication that maybe there's an attack coming. Making a fist, um, obviously, kind of an obvious one, where somebody's making a fist. But a lot of times, people will make a fist down by their side or behind their back in attempt to maybe cold block ya or sucker punch ya. So watching people's hands, what we talked about with our new officers is, the most deadly thing that people can hurt you with is their hands. You need to watch people's hands. What are they doing with their hands? Are they making fists? Are they going in their pockets? Are they going in their waistbands? We need to make sure that we're watching those hands. Those non-verbal communications speak a lot louder than verbal communications. You can tell a lot by how somebody's feeling just based on their body language. And, you know, that's just something that we can't hide. If I, if I told you that, oh, and I use this... If I, if I told you that, oh, and I use this example a lot too, because I find myself doing, I'll watch my, my partner's body cam footage when we just got into a fight and I know that we're gonna get into a fight, I'll start like stretching, like, I'll be like, oh, God, I know we're gonna get into a fight, I don't wanna pull a hammy. So I'm just like, I know, and you can start looking at yourself, stretch. A lot of times, bad, bad guys do it too, when they're about to get into a fight, they get into that fighting stance and they go, I'm not gonna fight, I'm not gonna fight, I'm not gonna fight. Well, what does your body language say? You're gonna fight. So looking at what their non-verbal communication, what does their body language say what they're gonna do? Or, I'm not leaving, no, I'm not gonna leave, I'm not leaving, I'm not leaving, as they're looking for a way out, they're looking for a way to run. So touching on some de-escalation stuff, quick video and then I'll get into how to take somebody from an irrational state of mind to a rational state of mind.
It's just, there's all this pressure, you know? And sometimes it feels like it's right up on me and I can just feel it, like literally feel it in my head and it's relentless and I don't know if it's gonna stop. I mean, that's the thing that scares me the most, is that I don't know if it's ever gonna stop.
Yeah. But you do have a nail in your head.
It is not about the nail.
Are you sure? Because, I mean, I'll bet if we got that out of there.
Stop trying to fix it.
No, I'm not trying to fix it, I'm just pointing out that maybe the nail is causing.
You always do this. You always try to fix things when what I really need is for you to just listen.
See, I don't think that is what you need, I think what you need is to get the nail.
See, you're not even listening now.
Okay, fine, I will listen, fine.
It's just, sometimes it's like, there's this achy, I don't know what it is. And I'm not sleeping very well at all, and all my sweaters are snagged, I mean, all of them.
That sounds really hard.
It is. Thank you. Ow!
Oh, come on, if you would just.
Don't.
So just kind of a funny little video that shows to de-escalate somebody, not always are they looking for somebody to just fix their problem right away, they're just looking for somebody to vent to. They just need to talk about their problem and have somebody listen to it. But when we get into de-escalating somebody, what we, what, the first thing we need to make sure that we're doing is making sure our self is de-escalated first. Because it's gonna be really difficult if you're escalated to de-escalate somebody else. So self-de-escalation is really important. And what we, what we talk about a lot is that this box breathing drill, where you're, when you're escalated, your heart rate's up, you're breathing rapidly, and one of the best ways to drop your heart rate and to get back to breathing normally is to do this box breathing drill. So you find yourself getting escalated, getting upset about something, try to think back to this and go, okay, box breathing. I'm gonna breathe in for four seconds, I'm gonna hold my breath for four seconds, then I'm gonna breathe out for four seconds, and I'm gonna hold my breath for four seconds. And I'm gonna do this box drill until I can feel myself somewhat calmed down, somewhat de-escalated. When I first heard this, I first kinda was taught this box breathing drill, I was like, oh, come on, it's a box breathing drill, right? And then I heard that the Navy SEALs use it before they go on ops and I was like, okay, maybe it's probably worth looking into and maybe worth doing. And then last April, I was working day shift, got dispatched to a suicidal female who said she was gonna take the kids with her and kill herself. So going to that call, I could feel myself getting escalated, I could feel myself starting getting tunnel vision, knowing that this lady was gonna, her likely gonna shoot her kids and then shoot herself. And that's ended up what happened, was in a park in our city, lady shot her four-year-old and nine-year-old and then shot herself. And going to that, I could feel myself, like I said, getting tunnel vision, getting escalated, and I knew, went back to this training going, okay, to calm myself down so that when I get there, I know what to do and I can think rationally, I'm gonna do this box breathing drill. So en route, going a hundred and some miles an hour, I started doing this box breathing drill in my squad and it actually helped me a lot. So got there, was able to do what I needed to do to, to help out, but, so it, it, it works a lot if you guys are, do find yourselves in something like that where you're like, I don't know how I can think rationally right now, do this box breathing drill, it, it does work, it works, it works wonders, so. But this is the stairway module, module, what we use in law enforcement now, it was developed by the FBI hostage rescue team, but now we all use it. Law enforcement, it used to be the ask, tell, make back in the day, I'm gonna ask you to do something, if you don't do it, I'm gonna tell you to do it, if you still don't do it, I'm gonna make you do it. Well, how good, how well do you think that ended up working? Terrible, right? It just created more youth supports incidents, more cops were getting hurt, more people were getting hurt. So then we kinda adopt, we adopted this, what they, what the FBI used for hostage rescue. The first two steps are the, if this was on some sort of like timeline, bar graph, the first two steps, active listening and empathy would be the longest steps, it would take the most amount of time, other than that rapport, influence and behavioral change are really, really fast. So we, we like to cover the active listening and empathy more, but active listening is, is not just listening and going, uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah, uh-huh, right? You're actually engaging in that conversation, you're, you're repeating some of the things that they're saying, and you're gonna show the empathy. Empathy's different than sympathy, sympathy is you, you actually feel bad for them or, or you're, you're heartbroken for them, but empathy, you might not care what they're upset about, you might not really understand what they're upset about, but you're still gonna show that empathy going, wow, that must be really tired, that must be, that, I can't imagine what that would be like. So the six steps, or the six things that we can do to show active listening, paraphrasing, emotional labeling, minimal encouragers, effective pauses, iMessages, open-ended questions, really help. You don't have to do all six of those, but having one or two of those in the back of your pocket to show and to, to have good active listening skills would be, would be huge. Paraphrasing is just repeating some of the things that they're saying, not verbatim, but word, but, or word for word, but just a little bit like, oh, so you're upset because of this, you're upset, you're mad because of this. Emotional labeling is saying, hey, I, I see that you're really upset right now. And even if you get it wrong, if you say, hey, I see you're really upset, and they go, no, I'm not upset, I'm so frustrated, it's like, oh, okay, well, okay, I see you're frustrated. You're still getting that, those points for, for trying to see how they're feeling. Minimal encouragers, we want people to continue talking, it's still, it's, minimal encouragers is really the same as open-ended questions. When people are upset, they're irrational, we, we, I like to say that they're a balloon filled with hot air. The best way to deflate that balloon is to let the hot air out. So the best way to deflate somebody that's escalated is to get them to continue to talk. Keep talking, minimal encouragers, yeah, oh, okay, go on, what else? Right? Still the same, it's kinda the same thing as opening questions, like, don't ask yes or no questions, ask questions where they have to answer with sentences. And then iMessages is if you have something relatable to what they're talking about, like, hey, I've gone through this, this is what's helped me. If it's not relatable, if you're dealing with a veteran and you say, hey, I worked security at the mall for three years, I know what you're going through, man, right? That's not gonna help. But if you have, if you have done something that this person, hey, listen, I, I went through a divorce last year, I know, I know it's difficult, this is what helped me, this is, these are the things that I did, those can really help too. But the picture shown is listening to respond or listening to understand, what one are, what one are we trying to be? We really wanna be that sponge, we don't wanna be the brick where what they're saying is just bouncing off of us, we want to try to absorb what they're saying and understand where they're coming from. Things to avoid saying is that calm down. In the history of the two words calm down, has that ever worked?
Never.
No, right? Calm down, there, you're sleeping on the couch. What I say instead of calm down is, hey, I can't understand you when you're just yelling at me. It's really hard for me to get what the point that you're trying to make when you're just screaming at me in my face. And then that typically helps people start to quiet down a little bit. Avoid saying that I understand, especially when you don't understand, because you will get called out on it. A young cop, when I first started copping and I'd go to domestics of people that have been married for twenty, thirty years, and I walk in there saying, hey, I understand what you guys are going through, I think I can help, and they're like, dude, you're just out of high school, you don't understand what we're going through. And they were right, I had no idea. So I lost all credibility after that. So instead of I, I understand, I can't imagine, I can't imagine what you're going through right now, I can't imagine how hard this is, I can't imagine. So people want options, everybody wants options, adult, adults want options, just like toddlers want options. And my four-year-old, if I told my four-year-old, hey, put your shoes on, we're going to the store, no, I don't wanna put my shoes on, and then I, we get into this argument and then he starts crying, right? But if I told him, hey buddy, you want your blue shoes or your red shoes, we gotta go to the store, what shoes do you wanna wear? And he's happy-go-lucky, gets to pick his shoes and now we're good to go, just like adults. Hey, do you wanna sit over here or do you wanna come over here to my office and talk? Do you wanna go over here? Can we go over here? What can we do? Where can we go to have this conversation? Everybody wants options, so. Always approach with that empathy, that's one, and then one of the golden rules is treat everybody how you'd wanna be treated. Discretionary time, distance gives us time, time gives us options, because we can't de-escalate everybody, there's gonna be people where we're not able to de-escalate, so have that plan in the back of your head going, hey, if, if things go bad, what am I doing? Make sure you have that distance. A lot of times on domestics, when I know things are getting bad and things are getting heated, I'll create a distance between me and that other person, maybe even using furniture between me and them, going, if they're gonna try to attack me, they're gonna have to come across this furniture, and I'll have time to go to other options if I need to. So, so having that in the back of your head going, okay, I need, I need some distance between us, I need something between us so that if they do try to attack me, I got options. So just before the training today, I came in a little bit early, took some pictures and talked to Chief and Amy about kind of some of your options. We talked about if there were to be an active shooter here, the likelihood of the first shot being fired is outside the door or right inside the door. One of the things that I noticed and I really, really like about your guys' setup is there's a doorbell that goes off anytime somebody walks through that door, which is awesome for you, because I'm sure you're here every city council meeting, or somebody is.
We shut it off during council meetings.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
But that's a good indication, like, why is somebody coming in right now? The city council meeting has already started, it's gonna divert your attention to the door and make you more aware of who's coming in. So I really, I really, really like that. Cover concealment, what's in front of you?
Concealment.
Concealment, yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't count on that for stopping any rounds, so. Some exit options that you guys have and anybody else that might be around is there or main doors, if there's something else going on over there.
Over my chair.
But that, that is where you guys are gonna wanna go. That's where you guys are gonna wanna go, come up with some sort of plan, you know? I don't know if you really can come up with a plan on how, how you're all getting out through there, but, but maybe practice it once every four, five, six months, saying, all right, everybody get up and we're getting out, get up, getting out. That'll create those mental rehearsals and create those mental scripts in your brain, so it'll be automatic if there is a disorderly person in your crowd where Chief says, hey, council members, I need you to exit, we're gonna deal with this person, where you guys are just automatic and you just have a nice flow to it. It would be awesome. If you needed to get completely out of the building, do you guys know where to go for that?
Down.
Yep, so it's just straight through and then there's another exit sign to the left, right through the break room, outside goes to the west side of the building, and then you guys would be able to, to get out and as far as ways you need. So I'm assuming all the city people know all of the exits around here. Make sure you are going over in your brain the other options for exits, because I'm guessing there's more than just these two. I'm sure there's another one on the north side and maybe even one on the east side? Maybe, but you guys are walking those and knowing what your exit options are and making sure there's nothing in the way that would slow you down. Areas to avoid, this is just a, just a quick little picture of underneath this, don't just hunker down behind that and hope that they don't get you, bad place to be, we don't wanna just be sitting ducks. Improvised weapon, just like you said, the gavel, nameplates, the very sharp top to the Minnesota flag there, that would be quite the improvised weapon if you needed to use that, but we also have just about anything that we can use for an improvised weapon, we can use it. Just knowing and thinking about it in the back of your head is a great first step of being quick with it, instead of hesitating going, what do I have, what do I have? We just automatically, I'm going this, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna do that, so. We, we, every, every place is different when it comes to, well, are we gonna have a safe meeting location after the fact? Are we gonna all meet somewhere? Do we wanna set something like that? If you guys do, try to make it a place where there's a bathroom, food and water available. When our bodies go through something like that and that real fear response, everybody's a little bit different, but after like I go hands-on with somebody or I get into a pursuit or gun pointing incident, I get super thirsty. Like my adrenaline takes the hydration out of my body and I get super, super thirsty. I always have water with me, so after something like that, I get thirsty. Some people might get hungry, get lightheaded, might have to use the bathroom, so if you do have a safe meeting location, try to have those things available, I know it's not always ideal, but something like that, so. Any questions? Any, any concerns for me or Chief or?
Are the schools teaching kids to get out? Cause that wasn't my impression.
Good question.
In fact, my kids came home and I said, no, you find a window and you get out.
Yeah. Oh, there, a lot of the schools around the metro are kinda going towards this. We have, in my city, we have, all of the schools are kinda going towards the get out, and then we get more towards the cities and they say, uh-uh, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do that. I would like to see the schools, if we, if we could get into the schools and kinda pitch why this is a better option. And a lot, the bigger concern for schools is, well, how do we account for all the kids? And, and our response is, you can't, you're not gonna. I mean, get the kids out and we'll find them later.
Wasn't there a shooting though where the shooter used that? Like they pulled the fire alarm to get everyone out the exits and then sat out and shot and as they were coming out?
Yep, there was one shooting in the history. So what we do is we train office statistics.
Okay, but I think that might be one of the ones.
Yeah, it is, yep. But statistically shown, shooters are a single-person job ninety-eight point something percent of the time. If it is a two-person shooting, they're always together like Harrison, Clevo, they never left each other's side in Columbine, they walked into each room together, they walked down the halls together, so that, it is, it, is it a possibility? Absolutely, absolutely. But what we wanna do is train for success in office statistics and, and statistically shown, that's not gonna happen. Because, because again, they know that their time is limited, they know that.
How often is an individual in the crowd carry?
At city council meetings?
No, at any particular thing, I mean, you never know where it's gonna happen.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, most of these, if somebody in that building would be carrying.
Yeah, it would end pretty quick.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a great question. I am a huge advocate of if you're legally allowed to carry, you should carry. But I'm also a huge advocate of if you're gonna carry, you need to come to peace with having to shoot somebody. Because a lot of people, when I, when I talk to people that carry, I'll, I'll even ask them just straight up, hey, have you ever thought about shooting somebody? And they're like, no, I haven't thought about that. It's like, well, you're carrying a gun and you, you might find yourself in a situation where you're gonna have to use it on a human and you've never thought about it? Have you talked to your significant other of carrying this burden of, hey, I'm gonna carry a gun, I might shoot somebody, I'm gonna get investigated, you know, am I gonna be in the wrong? I don't think so, but is it, there's a chance, maybe, right?
You're a bigger target than two.
Yeah, you could be a target, yep. We get the question a lot of, hey, I always have a gun in my truck, should I run out to my truck, get the gun and come back and try to find the bad guy? My answer to that is I would rather you didn't. One, you're already out, you're already out of the building, out of the red zone. Two, when law enforcement's coming, we're under extreme stress, we're under extreme tunnel vision, we are looking for a bad guy with a gun, bad guy with a gun. And the first thing we see is you running back into the building with a gun, who are And the first thing we see is you running back into the building with a gun, who are we likely gonna shoot? Right? And that actually happened in Colorado, I think. Trooper got ambushed, got shot and killed. Good Samaritan saw it, shot bad guy, went over to where the trooper and bad guy were, still had his gun in his hand, backup officer arrived, shot Good Samaritan. So it, it, it happens. So, so that, that would be my answer to that too, but yeah, you're definitely a target.
So if there's like two rooms in the active shooter healthcare and one room, they're breaking the windows and making noise and the other room, there's people, they're not making any noise, is it like a fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter?
Yeah, it depends, what, what room is easier to get into? What room is easier to get into is, they, they'd probably check rooms. Like the Nashville shooter that went through that school, like she walked into, like she, they walked into rooms multiple times, looking in, checking, checking into rooms, checking doors, 'cause you wa, watched them walk through the halls. So whether there are people making noise in that room and the door was barricaded, they're still probably not gonna waste their time getting in, because then she just, they went and perched up on the balcony and started shooting at the cops that were arriving. If there's no other questions, again, I really appreciate you guys being here and, and willing to take some different, yeah, I'm sorry.
Not a question, just a comment. This is the fourth time I've had to go through one of these. I'm a teacher, so I get it lots. And then my part-time job made me do it. This was the best, so.
Oh, wow.
Far and away the best one that I've had, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's really nice of you to say. But I, I do hope that you guys all took something, one or two things away from this, mental rehearsals. Bring this back to your families, make sure everybody's kind of on the same page, thinking the same, so that way we're all have our, a chance of survival goes up if we ever are caught in one of these things, 'cause they are getting more and more frequent, people, people are getting more and more mentally ill and, you know, you just never know where it's gonna happen, so.
I've always told like my kids and I've always like, in an area that not, you know, kinda sketchy or whatever, the kinda stand and walk tall and like, you know, don't mess with me kinda thing, is that helpful or?
Yeah, appearance, appearance is absolutely not helpful. If, if there's somebody that wants to target people, they're gonna target people that are gonna be an easy victim. So if they're kinda lollygagging and maybe, maybe not necessarily holding themselves up, then maybe, yeah, it'd be rather than somebody that, in law enforcement, we talk a lot about our appearance. Yes, our, our boots shine, do we look disheveled? Because we, they've actually interviewed guys that have assaulted officers and they said, "Yeah, I picked this cop because his boots were super dirty, looked like his belt was kinda like sideways and then this cop over here, his boots were shiny, he looked, he looked in order and I was like, 'Well, I'm gonna go after that guy.'" So appearance can absolutely have a stake in who gets victimized. Well, that's all I have for you guys. Looks like we have food and new people. How are you?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we can turn this on.